Morning, take it away.
Great. Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call this evening's meeting to order. This is May fifteenth of two thousand and twenty-four. I'll begin by asking each of our commissioners to please respond with a "here" when I call out your name. Commissioner Don.
Here.
And Commissioner Duggan.
Here.
Commissioner Fisher.
Here.
And Commissioner Lysick.
Here.
My phone isn't here for like turned off. Wondered what you were doing turning on my microphone.
Okay, we'll begin this evening with reports from our chief executive officer and management staff.
Good evening, President Sanders and Commissioners. A quick update here for you. First, Commissioner Don had asked some questions about right of entry at our last work session. As we're looking into that question, this was as relates to the lead service line inventory or the service line inventory project, I should say. We'll discuss that in upcoming water supply committee, so we can have a fuller discussion on that. And also Commissioner Sanders asked about experience of the Willamette, the water on the Willamette. So we have a little bit more detail there. We reached out to both the cities of Wilsonville and Sherwood. And City of Wilsonville gives the following report that customers, they conduct customer surveys every two years. And in two thousand and twenty-two, the survey, eighty-three percent of respondents rated the quality of the drinking water as excellent or good. The survey did not specifically address water aesthetics and no citizen complaints have been received about the taste and odor of the water. With the city of Sherwood, they're uncertain if records were kept on the volume of citizen concerns when the water supply changed from their groundwater into the Willamette. A few customers were concerned about the perception of the Willamette as a drinking water source. Some citizens wanted additional analysis. Sherwood's been using the Willamette as drinking water source for more than decade. And I think in two thousand and eleven, actually, is when they switched over to the Willamette. And the water quality concerns are minimal right now. We are planning to do some sort of a taste test of water at the leadership team to see how that process works. And then in a work session to figure out how well we can manage it, bring it maybe for the board to have some fun with with the taste test as well. So we'll look into that in the future. A reminder of upcoming meetings, the June regular meeting. The original meeting was scheduled to fall on the new federal and state holiday, Juneteenth. So the board took action by adopting Resolution zero five twenty-four that set the June regular board meeting to June twenty-sixth at six P M. Our normal start time. And then July, there will be no work session for July second. It's proximity to both Juneteenth and the, I'm sorry, it's proximity to the parent board meeting and the Fourth of July holiday, considering light agenda. We've asked for that to be canceled and the board did concur on that. So no, no board meeting, work session rather, briefing former leaders tomorrow. Hopefully, hopefully all of you can come. We've invited some of TVWD's past leaders who have been away from the district for a while for briefing on the evolution of TVWD's operations, progress we've made on the Willamette. The briefing will be tomorrow, beginning eleven thirty, and board members are all invited. We hope to see you there. Commissioner Sanders has signed up. Obviously, I'll be there as well. Great. And Commissioner Fisher, we can't see if you're attending, but we hope to see you tomorrow.
I'll be attending.
Excellent. It should be an interesting event. In fact, we have out front here, when you came in, you probably saw the pipes from the Washington County Spine. That's when you saw Commissioner Don at the back when we took you back there. And then a piece that's out of the MPE section, forty-inch piece pipe out there, and we'll show that to some of those folks as well. And with that, I'll turn over to Justin Dyke, who is presenting tonight's director report. Justin?
Paul, good evening, Commissioners. As you remember, when I spoke to you at the March work session, I talked about our water supply integration communications project or upcoming campaign. I had mentioned then that we were doing some customer research. I asked you politely to not engage in our customer research, not potentially skew the results. So I want to thank you in advance for for not engaging in our phone surveys and responding to any focus group requests. But I also want to give you tonight a high level review of what those focus groups and that survey effort has shown us about our customers and their opinions and some of their, some of what we discover as things that they value in the Willamette as a project and as a future system for our district. So as a reminder, the goal was learning about our customer opinions and some of the demographics for planning a successful supply integration communications campaign. We're going to show you tonight the key findings of a phone survey and focus groups for that communications. Research was conducted in February and March of this year. Four hundred phone survey participants and two in-person focus groups with ten regional customers each. I say regional, that means folks living in the Beaverton, Hillsborough, and TVWD service territories, all who will receive this water. This effort was led by FM three research, their polling firm up and down the West Coast. They've done a lot of great work in the state of Oregon, including some of our key customers like Nike, as well as other political and public matters throughout the state and again, a larger of the West, the larger West Coast. Some of the key findings we found, number one, residents are broadly satisfied with their water and they want to continue taking their water for granted. That phrase was especially interesting to us. It means they currently take their water service largely for granted. And when asked about their water service, they wish to continue that ability. The impacts of growth are seen on many aspects of our customers' daily lives, including water supply and infrastructure, growth to the region, new housing development, construction, expansion of the area. We see lots of it in our West Hills area with subdivisions, traffic increasing and so forth. So the impact of growth in this term is a more broad sense of growth, but it is seen and reflected in their opinions of water infrastructure. When they get into more detailed questions about the water and water and the Willamette water supply system, they want a water system that has two main features. It delivers high-quality water, multiple treatment steps, and consistent monitoring are their proof points. Now, helping them picture the process is compelling. The difference here between understanding and compelling is important. Our customers noted to us that they would like to see a high-level overview of things like the multiple stages of barrier, multiple barrier treatment at the water treatment plant, the things that we do to control water quality, monitor water quality, but they don't want to have a deep-level scientific understanding. They want to know that we are doing the things, but not how the things work. And they also want to know that their water system is prepared for the future, both in terms of population growth and natural disasters or emergencies. And again, they want to know that we're planning for taking into account these things that they could and will likely happen to our region at some point in time. Population growth is happening. More and more people are moving to the area. So as in terms of water system planning, they are looking for us to be taking that into consideration and being prepared for it. And delivering information about this project on multiple message platforms with multiple messengers, including their trusted water provider, will be important. For us, this means it's not too, it's not too important that we focus exclusively on digital content, social media, or earned media, television news, radio news, things like that, or other marketing efforts. What our customers have indicated to us is that they want to see the information available in multiple sources, multiple places, and for multiple different types of people. So we did dive a little bit more into research on what those people might look like to be positive messengers. I have some of that available. I have the full research report available today if you want to look at it. What we see as far as messengers is often scientists, academics, engineers, people of subject matter expertise. This is often talked about in focus group terms against things like your elected officials, city governments. People don't think that often that might be the person who knows how a treatment plant works. So there is a little bit of disconnect sometimes you will see between what people think of different groups of people as their subject matter experts. The one that we always kind of lean back towards is where does the faith community fall into this? And in this category, in this testing categorically, faith leaders, as an example, tested very low. It's not a surprising result to us because we're talking about public infrastructure, public health, water, and water treatment. So it's a good thing for us to test through some of these hypotheses and see that scientists, academics, and engineers are typically our top-ranked messengers in terms of trust and receptiveness for our customers. Intensity of support. So you'll see in the blue shaded upper area, about twenty-one percent of our people tested demonstrated they were consistently in favor of the Willamette water supply project. Twenty-three percent is what we call ever oppose. That is meaning at some point in the focus groups or phone surveys, they demonstrated that they could be opposed to the project. But it's not that they are a consistent oppose. It's that they did at some point demonstrate an opinion of opposition. But the most important category here is the swing. In gray, the large fifty-five percent of people who are currently undecided and open to hearing more information. This is a group that's incredibly important for us, and this will be our largest target audience of people to increase project awareness, project support, and shift them into positions of favorability. So as we look at the key messages, the dark blue to the left is messages that people rated as very convincing to create positions of support for the project. And the lighter blue to the right are positions that are somewhat convincing. Positions based on ownership and local control of the water supply and the water source ranked very high. Positions based on our messages, based in the science of what we're doing for water treatment and our infrastructure ranked very high. Awareness and planning for climate change and growth, earthquakes, preparation and resilience, all ranked very high. And these are messages that we will be tailoring a significant portion of our campaign around. So as you hear from me more and more in the future and we talk about where the key messages are, how we put them into the campaign and how often we use them and why we're using them, this is becoming the basis of that information. Ownership, science, climate change, earthquake resiliency, growth, these are all topics that are near and dear to people is living in this area and their topics and key messages that are helping them go from a position of undecided on our project into a position of favorability. Now to look a little bit more, yes?
Since you drew that red line on there, gotta ask.
Yeah.
What's below the red line?
Below the red line are going to be statements like, "You should trust us as your water provider to bring on this new system, which will serve our community for the next hundred years." Positions where we are making an assumption that as the entity in charge, we should be trusted. Those rank lower because we're not demonstrating a why to the customer base, where they want to see a direct, "What are you doing and why are you doing it?" So we are, in this instance, we are now taking local control. We are planning for the future through climate change, resiliency, and we are creating a water, or we should say, we are constructing a water treatment plant that has multiple barriers of treatment that are all scientifically proven and have positive track records of success. So you can demonstrate why trust can be achieved, but to use trust as the statement doesn't actually build trust in the customer's mind.
Is it trust in the name TVWD?
Say that again for me.
Is it, is it trust in the name or in the logo TVWD?
No, and in these cases, a lot of the times, what, because the focus groups were of all three partner areas, we use phrases like "your water provider." So it was without brand directly associated to them.
And then what's the difference between trust and ownership?
So again, trust would be, do you have just an, a, a true faith or belief in those who provide your water versus ownership, meaning are we purchasing water wholesale from other, other water providers? Or do we own the system? As in with the Willamette, as we were a three, we are one of three people who are the owners of the system. So ownership, and ownership is a fascinating one to me because one of the things, and this will appear on a slide in a moment. One of the things that tested really low is reducing our reliance on other water providers. Well, to reduce your reliance on other water providers, for us, it means now being in a position of ownership where we own the system and we are in control. Demonstrating the ownership and the control to our customers, as in you customers of TVWD will have the local control pulled significantly higher than customers, than us telling our customers, "We, as your water provider, will have a reduced reliance on other water providers through wholesale water purchasing." The two are very much related, but the local control aspect pulls very much favorably with our customers.
Thank you.
Yeah, so looking into.
Commissioner Sanders, sorry to interrupt. So Commissioner Fisher has a question.
Yes.
Justin, could you go back to the pie chart for, for a quick moment? I was curious about something. So we have the consistently strong support. What, and then we have this ever oppose group, which is, you know, at some point, something was said that caused them to say, "I don't want this." Was there a mirrored group? I would assume it might be a little bit smaller. A consistently never support getting water from the Willamette? Is, was, is there still any of that going around?
Could you say it again for me, Commissioner? I didn't quite.
So we have a consistently strong support. Is there, is there a similar consistently always oppose group in our data?
So no, we didn't do that. What we did is, is we put everyone into the ever oppose group because as they were read messaging and developed their initial opinion, that's where they get into the ever oppose. And then we did try to pull a second message through them to see if we could shift them from any position of opposition into at least one position class higher or closer towards support. So there, there isn't a consistent opposition category, no.
Okay. Thank you.
Which actually dovetails very nicely into this next slide. So what you'd see here is again, those same statements on the far left. All respondents based per own percentage of convincing. What we really want to focus on is how many of them are in that swing category, which are people who are currently undecided and who can be shifted into a position of favorability. But also, all the way to the right, the positive identity, identity intensity movers, I'm sorry. Those are people who are read, and it is an initial message point about the Willamette project, identified their initial opinion, whether that might be undecided or ever opposed or within a gradient of support. And upon hearing additional messaging, were able to be convinced to gain at least one category stronger in support. So these are messages that now have moved people from whatever their initial opinion was further towards support. Now that could be someone who is a soft supporter, somewhat supportive, moving into a consistently support, or someone who's moving out of an unfavorable opinion towards an undecided or from undecided towards supportive. So that's where you see again messaging based on TVWD or these water providers owning their sources and owning their supply systems, being highly successful. Messages planning for climate and growth being successful and messages based on the science of treatment being very successful, which are all things that you will hear really often throughout the campaign as we pull together all those campaign details. These will be the basis of our key messaging. So in conclusion, customers do appear to be supportive of the WWSS when provided context about it. This seventy-three percent still support after critical messaging means that if you were to take the total undecided and strong, strong support, add them up, and then give them a message of opposition, what's the falloff rate? So after a falloff rate of receiving a critical message, we do still have polling showing that seventy-three percent of people would be supportive of the WW, WWSS when provided context about it. The benefits most valued are maintaining water rates, ensuring water supplies in the face of climate change, natural disaster, and growth. The messages highlighting the process to clean water, need, the need to prepare for growth and climate change are the most persuasive. And people are less likely to value reduced reliance on other providers, except when in the context of local ownership. You know, this is one of these things that in, in the research, it strikes me as people can be inherently contradictory in, in their thought processes. This would be one where we're getting close to that, you know, local control and reliance on other providers, in my mind, are, are quite linked together. But I am biased. I work here. I'm aware that we purchase water wholesale and without that ability to, or with, with us no longer wanting to purchase water wholesale, well, then we would become an owner of a system. So that's really the, the basis of what the campaign will become built around. And I look forward to returning to you in the future with more campaign materials, campaign plans, to show exactly how this then becomes a full-fledged communication effort in the near future. Any questions?
Really cool. Yeah, very interesting. Thank you.
It's really, it's really amazing.
So President Sanders, that concludes the report of the chief executive officer and management staff.
Thank you, Paul. Yeah, I can think in terms of vector calculus, but that stuff just goes right over my head.
I can spell vector calculus and that might be about it.
Wow, so glad you're doing that. Okay, um, from, that will move on to Commissioner Communications and reports of meetings attended. And we'll start with Commissioner Don. Commissioner Don?
Yes, I attended the work session and tonight's meeting.
Thank you, Commissioner Don. Commissioner Duggan?
On April twenty-fourth, I attended the Metro Impact meeting where they spent a good deal of time talking about waste tipping fees, not something directly related to our water district, but they also did a deep dive into metro housing and how that affects the, the recommendation for later this year regarding the urban growth boundary. So that was a good discussion to listen to. On the seventh, we had the board work session where we got the WWSP update and the lead service inventory report. On the eighth, last Wednesday, I attended the Talking Water webinar where staff did an excellent job in going over spring irrigating, irrigation maintenance and all the issues involved in that. Last night, I attended a Washington County CPO number one meeting where our new communication staff member, Lindsay Walknick, I hope I pronounced her name right, did an excellent job in updating the community on two main replacement projects that are going to affect the neighborhood over here in Terre-Linda and then up Barnes Road, West Lawn and Beaumont areas or streets, I believe. And she did a great job talking and encouraging people to look up our water quality report, consumer comments report. Explained all that very well, much more eloquently than I could ever try. And then at the meeting, Trimet spoke about their initiatives here on the West Side. And then lastly, the Peter Court Development Project there at the Sunset Transit Center. They had a new proposal to show the community where they're going to build three very urban-scale buildings directly north of the West Side, or excuse you, the Sunset Transit Center. And it was, they're pretty impressive drawings, much, much more urban-looking than the previous proposals. And they're explaining more of the phasing on how they propose to develop the properties there that surround the Sunset Transit Center. There between Sunset Highway and Barnes Road directly to the west to the St. Vincent's Hospital complex. And then tonight's meeting.
No, no. Thank you, Commissioner Duggan. Commissioner Fisher?
Ah, evening, everybody. So on April twenty-fourth, I attended the West Side Economic Alliance Forum with the brand-new Oregon House Speaker Julie Fahy, where she talked about housing and infrastructure improvements and how they're going to continue to fund those things. Then on the seventh of May, I attended the work session. On the thirteenth, I attended the State of the City for Tiger to hear from Tiger leaders about what's going on in the city. They have a lot of changes coming up on the ballot, and so one of those involves the Willamette River. And so I've been trying to follow that pretty closely. On the fourteenth, I attended our planning session for this meeting, and then I'm attending tonight's meeting.
Thank you, Commissioner Fisher. Commissioner Lysick?
I attended the work session on the seventh, had a phone discussion with President Sanders on the tenth, talking about the upcoming CEO evaluation process and tonight's meeting.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner Lysick. And for myself, definitely caught flat-footed. I didn't turn anything in this week. I guess I'll turn it in next month, but effectively just usual meetings. I meet with Paul every other week. And then I think that's really about it. So things have gotten a lot quieter the last six months, I have to say. And that's welcome. So with that being it, topics to be raised by Commissioners, do we have any topics this evening from any of the Commissioners? Great. Not hearing any, we'll move into the public comment section this evening. Public comment time is set aside for persons wishing to address the board on items on the consent agenda and matters not on the agenda. Additional public comment will be invited on agenda items as they are presented. Do we have any persons this evening who would like to comment?
Not seeing any online.
Great. Thank you, Sam. Not having anybody here and Sam saying not anybody online, we'll move on to our consent agenda items, which are items considered to be routine and are enacted in one motion without a separate discussion. Any board members may request that an item be removed by motion for separate discussion and action. Any items requested to be removed from the consent agenda for separate discussion will be considered immediately after the board has approved those items which do not require discussion. This evening, we're approving the meeting minutes from the April seventeenth regular meeting, the May seventh work session meeting minutes, and the appointment of a Metro Policy Advisor Committee for the Washington County Special District Representative. Do I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as approved, as presented?
This is Jim Don, so moved.
Commissioner Lysick, I second.
Thank you, Commissioner Don and Commissioner, Commissioner Lysick. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? Not hearing any, the motion passes. We'll move on to our next item this evening, which is our business agenda. And just for some advice, Clark or Sam, do I need to gavel out and then move into the control board meeting? Or the contract board meeting?
Well, yes, you need to reconvene as the local contractor.
All right. So since our next business, business agenda item has to do with the local control review board, I will adjourn our regular meeting. And then I will call to order the Twalton Valley Water District Local Contract Review Board meeting. This meeting is to authorize, to provide authorization of a contract specific, say that twenty times fast, the authorization of a contract-specific exemption by our local contract review board and Justin Carlton, our chief financial officer, CFO, will present.
President Sanders, good evening, Commissioners. So this evening, I'm requesting a contract-specific exemption for auditing services for Moss Adams LLP. So this is just the last of the items associated with this. It's something we've been talking about for a little while now. So as a reminder, the Local Contract Review Board rules, Division one-twenty, do allow for special procurements to be exempt from competitive bidding with approval of the Local Contract Review Board, provided certain circumstances exist. So they can either be a situation to incur, or excuse me, it's unlikely to encourage favoritism in awarding the contract and it won't substantially diminish competition and resulting in substantial cost savings to the district or the public, or substantially promotes public interest in a manner that could not be realized through the competitive bidding process. So that will be the, the proposed exemption that we're seeking. So how we evaluated this, looked at staff, or excuse me, staff looked at the Moss Adams relationship. So we believe this substantially promotes public interest in that the nature of the accounting transactions associated with the Willamette water supply system are very complex. They involve multiple funds, various allocations. And so it would take considerable time and effort and probably costs associated with the new auditor to come on board, get familiar with it, impose risk to TVWD as well as its partners. Secondly, Moss Adams has high levels of familiarity and acceptance of accounting methods. We actually brought them in early as we were developing these procedures and got their buy-in and approval before we implemented them. So they're very comfortable with, with the process and the methods that. Uh, before we implemented them, so they're very comfortable with, with the process and the methods that we're using. And then lastly, the volume of uh, WWSP transactions uh, through twenty twenty-seven, so. The WWSP transactions make up uh, the majority of all of our expenditures as well as our revenues, because we track the, the expenditure, the. Uh, partner shares as revenues to the district, so by looking at our budget, you can see overwhelming majority of the resources and expenditures. Are transactions associated with WWSP, so it's really important that we have somebody who's, who's well versed in those transactions and comfortable with the approach. The process that we went through, um, to get to tonight is first, we presented this concept, um, and the auditor selection process to the Finance Committee back on March twenty-nine. Um, and then based on that recommendation, uh, we brought forward uh, to the board their uh, selection of Moss Adams as the, as the auditor. Uh, was required by board policy, and so the board passed a resolution, uh, accepting Moss Adams as the auditor at the last, uh. At the last board, regular board meeting in April seventeenth. And then as required, uh, we did issue a public notice of a special procurement, uh, and that was uh, published in the Oregonian on May eighth. Our recommended action is that acting as the Local Contract Review Board, the Board adopt Resolution twelve twenty-four. Declaring an exemption from competitive bidding for the auditing services contract for Moss Adams LLP. Be happy to take any questions at this time.
Alright, thank you, Justin, I don't think there are any questions, so with that, uh, I'll ask the board for a motion and a second. To adopt Resolution twelve dash twenty-four, which is a resolution by the Local Contract Review Board. That approves a contract specific exemption for Moss Adams LLP. As the independent external auditor for the Twalton Valley Water District.
Uh, this is Commissioner Duggan, so moved.
Jim Don, second.
Great, thank you, Commissioner Don, Commissioner Duggan, uh, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Not hearing any, the motion passes. Um, that being the last agenda item for the Twalton Valley Water District Local Contract Review Board, I will close that meeting. Uh, not hearing or aware of any additional items for the monthly board meeting. I see no reason to gavel and reopen the board meeting, um, in which case then we be done.
Plea. Just an announcement. I turned seventy-eight on Sunday.
Marvelous.
Congrats.
Congratulations.
There's pie.
I'm a cookie person.
There's cookies also.
I see those too.
Man after my old heart.